All right, thanks everyone for being here. Oh, um, I don't, oh shit. But let's get, let's get going. I think she'll be here. Okay, um, I would like to, which items are we gonna start with first?
Just a preview of the agenda. If there's any questions you had on the consent. You have to look from the school board who's here in case you have any questions. And is this budget amendment allowed?
Any questions on the consent agenda?
I will ask Heather and Mike to make sure to keep us straight, but I believe we need to pull that item in formal, the presentation that we're not going to do anymore. I do believe we need to go ahead and pull that or since it's not gonna happen. So make that statement tonight at five.
I'm sorry, which statement?
The legal settlement.
Oh, right, then we're not gonna, we're not gonna do it.
Do you want to hear that?
Yeah. Okay.
So you make that statement tonight.
Sure. And Ron Payne, yeah, Ron Payne can't be here, he's got a family matter, so we're just gonna move into our next meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then on the public hearings, I have Mike through on Lenamar. Do you want any questions? We talked about this last time. Do you have any questions on Lenamar? And what we're doing there?
I don't.
I don't.
Tell you next time, it might be kinda cool to have this up there. That way if somebody wants to, you know, we have questions, we can go, boom, get, pull that up and I'll see it.
Good.
I'm actually looking for that right now.
Did you want to talk about it at all, Commissioner? As you're pulling it up?
Yes, I would. And, uh, one is, I, I, I like, I like an overview of what we're gonna be voting on is what I'd like.
Yes. Did you have?
So this evening, Lenamar, this is our public hearing. What we'll be asking you to vote on today, if you see your request for board action. The motion that we're asking you to put forward is a motion to approve the resolution, which authorizes a consolidated and modified economic development agreement incentive. So by approving the resolution, you would be authorizing the agreement, so there's only one vote that you would need for that. As a reminder, we've got two agreements with Lenamar currently, one from 2011, one from 2014. The resolution, if approved, would merge, consolidate and modify into a single agreement with a single set of milestones. While doing so, we would extend the timelines slightly, but we would create no additional incentives and we would not change any of the performance commitments that Lenamar is required to deliver under the previous agreements. So the same 800 jobs, the same $315 million investment and the same incentive.
I think it's good for people to know that this is, this is something that has been ongoing for a, for a long time. You know, prior, prior to this board. And that what we're trying to do is to, uh, I don't really like the word clean up, but I'll use it to go back and make sure that they're keeping their commitments and that, you know, and we're modifying ours to fit what they are actually doing. That in layman's terms, pretty much what we're doing or have done, but it's really hard on y'all.
And part of the story we'll tell today, you know, begins with Volvo sort of leaving the area in 2010. 250 jobs that went with that. We'll also talk a little bit about, you know, how after Lenamar came in, they had expectations around the Caterpillar plant, which we lost as well, which impacted their growth strategy and thus our economic development agreement with them.
Will, will there be any discussion about what they're actually doing now, you know, as far as, you know, the transmissions and some of the other things?
That's correct. We'll have two representatives from Lenamar today with us. They're, person that oversees all sales as well as manufacturing in the United States will be here and so you'll be able to quiz them on any questions you have.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's important that, that they've lost, you know, cat, people here, somebody's lost Caterpillar, it's like, oh my gosh, you know. But what they've done to recover and picking up these additional accounts is pretty good. Thank you very much.
Can you just follow that format and have Nate give you a preview of what we're gonna vote on in the factory house?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, board members. We've spoken a couple of times about this before. Tonight, we'll be at the public hearing for the manufactured home text amendment. Basically, it looks to expand the placement of manufactured homes in three additional districts, R1, R2 and Beaver Dam. You do vote to approve the item we had discussed before about a change in materials, to remove wood as an allowable finish and stick with the, the block or the brick as part of the skirting that would be on top of a permanent foundation. These are part of the, um, um, some of the options or, or standards that would be required for the placement of manufactured homes in these areas. And before you tonight, you have the option to approve, deny the text amendment or should you so direct staff, we can talk about other options. And I'll just keep it simple at that, since we've talked about this a couple of times before. I'm available for any questions you may have.
And on any matter that is a zoning amendment, what's the, if it doesn't pass by, if it's not consensus, could require a second vote? If it's like four to three?
Not for this one.
This is just, a simple majority gets it accomplished on the first vote. Okay, thanks.
And then we'll make two votes, one on, you'll have to vote to approve a consistency statement on each of your zoning items and then vote to either approve or not approve the, um, the type of text amendment.
We included consistency statements for both consistent and inconsistent in your packet for this item, so.
That's okay. I do have one question, Nate. Is there any information that's publicly available about, you know, some, when people do developments, they put different restrictions and covenants on it. From the, you know, not from like government zoning, but like private, you know, easements. Is, is there a way from like the planning department's perspective to understand where those properties are in the county? Or is that like not publicly recorded or organized or, you know?
Actually, there would be through the registered deeds, restrictive covenants. It would take, if you wanted a comprehensive list of those, I will tell you that would be a very heavy lift because we would have to basically analyze property by property. I mean, you might find a whole entire subdivision that would take.
Okay, so it's public, but it's not, it's nobody's job to organize it all in one place, right?
It would basically be a massive title search.
Okay, understood. That's okay. Just, just curious. Any other questions about this, um, this item?
Is this an item that the Affordable Housing Committee spent some time on?
Not really, you know, we've had our, we had our first meeting, it was a great meeting. We met for two hours and could've met for two more hours probably. But, you know, honestly, there was just so much on the agenda to kind of get organized at our first meeting. We did not have a chance to really discuss this issue.
Okay.
This, this moved forward a long time ago, so I mean, this has been, I think, and it was in the first, Affordable Housing Summit that we had.
Yeah, that work session last spring, yeah.
Yeah, that work session that we had and, uh, kinda, I mean, it's been around a long time, but as far as this group, that's where the first direction, there was enough to give direction to the staff to move forward, work on this and so on. So that's kinda where, where that came from, but it's, it's really been going on so long. It's, uh, it wasn't, it wasn't on our agenda, as the chairman said.
I mean, it's the kinda, it's the kind of thing, I would say, you know, in the future, these are the kind of policies I think that committee would wanna, you know, talk about before they come to the commission. Because this is clearly really all about affordable housing, right? I mean, that's really the main reason that the commission, I think, has been interested in talking about it. But as, as Commissioner Belter said, for, for this one, it just, it just wasn't possible to handle it.
Yeah, I was just curious if there were lots of.
I mean, and I think going forward for the committee, uh, that, you know, this discussion will, will continue. I mean, this is, this is, this is new this evening for Buncombe County, but it's not new for other counties. You know, they've been, they made this move a long time ago. And so as we, as we move forward, you know, we'll be measuring, we'll be looking at, you know, how this is working and, uh, and, you know, I look forward to, you know, reporting back seeing, you know, good positive things coming, coming through it and then looking at some of the other options, I mean, like, uh, Commissioner Farrar and I, you know, visited the, and I keep getting what it's called.
Over in Emma.
Yeah, over in Emma. Co-op, yeah.
Yeah, co-op.
I mean, it just, it just gives you, if you, if you ever go, you'll know that each of, for those people that live there have figured out a way for them to have a home. And, uh, and, and it's, it's as much home to them as, you know, a million dollar house, you know. As much home to them as any other kind of home. And they, I, I do, I wanna revisit that with Commissioner sometime.
I guess one other question, Nate, I have about the policy. Is there, is there any kind of way to kind of, I don't know, visually show or summarize, like, how much? And I, you know, and I realize that this is a building product and technology that has changed a lot over the years. But, um, is there any way to kind of understand how much this type of housing is already present in R1 and R2, in areas zone R1 and R2?
So we did include, uh, in your packets, you should see, there is a graphical representation. Let me find the specific exhibit, but it does provide a percentage as it relates to acreage in the county where you would find manufactured housing already, uh, before and after the amendment, if the amendment was to be approved.
Do you mean in terms of the percentage of land areas that are zoned that way?
By acreage.
Okay, that's actually a little bit, little bit different than what I'm asking, which is, you know, basically, um, so I realize R1 and R2 is not zoned to allow more of this type of housing to be built now. My question is how much of this type of housing already exists in area zone R1 and R2?
So like an inventory?
So, so what might help on that is when did zoning go into place that affected these areas? What year?
Okay, so it's 2009, so then.
Okay, so in 2009, the, the homes that were there were caught in this, in, in the ordinance. And so.
And Beaver Dam has been zoned for thirty years.
So.
So was Limestone.
So what you would have is you would have product that was representative of 2009 and before there. Is what you would have. But it's quite, it's, it's, that number's probably quite a bit.
Well, that's, that's my, that's my, my sense.
Yeah.
And that's part of, anyway, I just, I'm just curious if there's any way to kind of, uh, calculate that in, in some way visually or again, just how much this? Because it is zoned, it is zoned in a manner that you currently cannot build more of it. That doesn't mean it's not out there. It's, you know, there was, there's, my sense is that there's a lot of this kind of housing already in the areas that are zoned R1 and R2 that was built before the zoning ordinance went into effect. And I guess I was just trying to understand, is there any way to kind of understand the extent of it?
We can capture that, it is possible, so those would be deemed non-conforming. So it is possible to go in and map the, the, basically the nodes or the swaths of area that are covered. Say for instance, Lower Grass and Branch, Swanonoa. These are areas where there are already a number of manufactured homes on individually owned properties that are zoned everywhere.
Acre's Creek, yeah, I mean, you know.
They're everywhere, but it would take some time and effort, of course, to, to produce something, but it is possible.
Okay, that could be done, hadn't been done today. Again, it's the first time we're having some of these conversations together, so.
So I think to, this may not be your point, but it's a little bit different, Chairman's point, is that when we look at this, there are already many multi-section, cause this was on multi-sections, it's multi-section.
Pliesexual.
Okay? There are many out there now. So this will affect those that are going forward who would like to do that. And so it's not like you're going to have this massive amount of permitting in those areas for manufactured homes. It's not gonna happen. You're gonna, but for those that need that affordable home, it makes, it makes an incredible difference, so. That would be a good number to know, but that would be, that would be kind of, it's all, it's, it's probably a lot more than most of the time.
You know, one of the questions that I've gotten from a few people, they're thinking of manufactured homes today as mobile homes when I started working for the bank, for the bank in 71. And they depreciated, they didn't appreciate. And I think maybe we need to make it clear, you know, when you look at manufactured homes today and the way they're constructed and put up, you know, they don't, you know, appreciate it, just like any other home. If you take care of them, they appreciate. Now, any home, if you don't take care of it, it don't go down.
And that's a good, good point. So tonight, we will have Keith Miller from Tax and we will also either have Bob Haynes or Matt Stone from Permits.
Good.
And the reason why that's important too, is if this is approved, what we'll need to do is work very closely with permits and inspections to make sure that those standards that we were passing are, are, are done the way, the way we'd like to see them in the ordinance.
I think I heard that this was, maybe the last year or this year was the first year that, that single section manufactured homes went up.
You mean as part of the building code?
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Oh, they did?
Yeah. Yeah, and I may be wrong, but I, I believe I heard that. But to Commissioner Whiteside's point, he's, he is absolutely spot on. And it's the, you know, it's a combination of the home and the land that drive the value and the, you know, the assets associated. That's why we're being very careful is to the exterior. That's why that moved, that wood was moved because wood is, would be considered a appreciating asset and masonry is not. And so that's why, that's one of the reasons to, Commissioner Whiteside's point. Make sure appreciation is there.
So if you do make that motion tonight, just remember to make the amended motion to remove wood from the list of approved items.
Yeah, okay. Absolutely.
Here's, I think, my last question on this, just, just to, kind of, high level thinking about this as you go. And I realize this, the, so zoning was adopted in 2009, is that what you said? So a decade ago, so before any of us were here, before you were in the planning department. So this may be an impossible question to answer, but, you know, one of my questions is just when we have these different residential zoning categories, R1, R2, R3 and, you know, low density residential, but, so this, this, uh, the restrictions that are in place now are on R1 and R2 districts. So I ask, there's one question, it's like, is there some, what's the basis for how the current zoning plan determined? These areas should be R1 versus R2 and R3 because to me, it seems, you know, frankly somewhat arbitrary, which is part of what I don't like about the current policies. It kinda treats different areas of the county differently. Like if this is okay in some neighborhoods, why is it not okay here? But is there some more compelling underlying reason why, you know, these distinctions were made? Or was it just more that, hey, you know, the people who adopted zoning at the time felt like there should be these different zoning categories and had to make different decisions about where each of them would be?
So two things there. One is, let's go back in time to the Limestone zoning district, which served as the basis for how properties are zoned today. Beaver Dam was kind of on its own because it was its own unique district. Limestone served as your R1, R2, all those districts were there, it was simply applied countywide. The more rural areas, the farther as you get out from the municipalities, that's where you find your clusters of open use. The areas that are closer into the municipalities, where it becomes denser, it becomes more urban. That's where you'll find that, that pattern of R1 and R2. One other significant thing happened. The state abolished Weaverville and the city of Asheville's ETJs. So that's where you will also find a concentration of commercial, R1 and R2. When that happened, via the state, the state as part of their, their abolition bill said, only in counties where countywide zoning existed. So the county had to match zoning districts as closely as possible to Weaverville and Asheville. So you'll find, as you move out, you go more rural, but as you move in, you become more urban in the pattern. You'll find more R1, R2. With Weaverville and Asheville, as well as Limestone and Beaver Dam, you did have restrictions in terms of the placement of manufactured homes. So this is a policy shift.
Okay, so in, in general, that's true, but Chairman's point, that, that, you know, I'll give you an example. You may remember approving Rosewood, um, manufactured home park, an extension, it's, uh, an extension of their adult park that they had.
Yes.
Okay, y'all may remember that. Well, that was an existing community. And when zoning occurred, they overlaid a restrictive, um, and I don't know if it was, uh, LD or whatever, it wasn't, it wasn't R1 and R2.
Was it employment?
I don't know.
Okay.
It was something else. And this is on the, this is on the county line with going towards Mills River.
Revard Road.
Yeah, and there's, there's nothing there, but there's a convenience, there's a BP station, you know, on the front. Yet, it restricted their expansion and it didn't, I mean, it wasn't near, uh, any developments, it wasn't, it was in a rural area, yet they overlaid it and excluded something they wouldn't think.
That's absolutely a valid point and I'll be the first to admit.
You betcha.
Yeah, and tell you that zoning is not a perfect science or practice, but we certainly can rezone, support rezonings when it comes to that. And, and that's why this is, um, that's an absolutely valid point.
Yeah, so I mean, that's kinda where, the idea that, yeah, I know it wasn't, I know it wasn't arbitrary, but it's not an exact science. The other thing that, that comes in, in this, is that this also, this will allow an R3 designation to deal specifically with the manufactured home park, right?
Well, our.
Does R3 go away?
No, R3 stays intact, there's no changes proposed to R3.
Yeah, so what, what was occurring is when someone was, you know, building a, factor-built home, they're coming into an area, you know, and they, the only thing they could do is get it re-zoned to R3 and then everybody in the neighborhood's going out of their minds because included in R3 is a manufactured home park. You know, which, you know, there may not be appropriate to that area, but it certainly, you know, caused part of the, that's one of the reasons that we're doing, you know, hopefully doing what we're gonna do tonight. So an R3 would be for manufactured home park.
That's correct.
Okay, I do have one last question. You know, as, as she's kind of been discussing, uh, I'll try to kind of, you know, do her homework on it. One of the things that those who are kind of critics of the idea of more of this housing product are that, um, in, is that a lot of the financing of this housing is based on interest rates that are much higher than what can, you know, other traditional stick-built homes qualify for. And so even though it is, you know, the housing is less expensive to build or acquire, you know, if the, if people have these, you know, in some cases, you know, listen to the people who are making the arguments, kind of predatory lending type situations, then, you know, it's like a big credit card bill. Like you get trapped and even though it looks affordable from a price tag standpoint, you know, it can be, end up being not affordable. So I guess a couple of questions. One is just, do you have any kind of high level thoughts on that question? Cause again, I think what we're trying to do is in terms of looking at this, is like, would this help with affordable housing, right? But if people are paying eight percent instead of four and a half percent on interest rates, you know, to, to buy a house, then, um, maybe it's not so affordable after all. And then the second, is there anything from a policy standpoint, the county, if we're going to create policies that allow this to be done in more parts of the county, can do to actually address that issue?
Okay, so the first part, staff has really tried to remain impartial and stick to the, basically just the land use question and not delve too specifically into financing and that sort of thing, just because we're not banking experts and, you know, we just really tried to stick with the land use questions. Secondly, if I'm hearing you correctly, are you asking if there's any other ways that we can sort of study this or offer options that?
Well, my understa, yeah, right, so my understanding, I'm certainly not an expert on it either, but is that, and again, you know, just, that in many cases, manufactured housing will not qualify for kind of standard, you know, standard 30-year loan against the, and, and therefore, the interest rates people get are basic, are usually borrowing against the value of the land rather than the actual home. Like if, you know, if you're gonna buy a house, you know, the bank requires an appraisal of the property to make sure it could, that the loan supports the value, uh, the, 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 the house supports the value of the loan. But that manufactured housing, sometimes it doesn't, or maybe in often cases it doesn't, and, and the interest rates are much higher.
I think I can help.
Go ahead.
What usually happens in, yeah, I put on my bank account again. What happens when you look at manufactured housing is that a lot of the people who purchase manufactured housing, they can't purchase the $300,000 homes. So unfortunately, their credit, a lot of them starting out, they've had bumps in the road and their credit might not be 750 or whatever it is, whatever the scores are today. And that's why you might see their credit a little higher than say it would be somebody with 800 or whatever it is, the, how they look at it now. And what happened, and I agree with the predatory lending, now that's another issue because that gets out of, completely out of hand. But hopefully a lot of laws are in place now, I think, to prevent that. But that's one of the reasons in manufactured housing, because there's a lot of people who are starting out, they're struggling to get ahead, that's their first home and they don't always have, you know, the best credit.
But isn't there also a distinction from a lending standpoint that, you know, for, for a stick-built home on a foundation, of course, they're gonna look at, the bank would look at the, you know, the credit, you know, history of the, of the person seeking the loan, but they'll also lend based on just the inherent value of the property. But with manufactured housing, they, they oftentimes are, will not be able to and then therefore they're just looking at that person's credit score. Maybe it's not great, therefore, you know, hey, you're, you know, yeah, we'll give you a loan, but it's, it's gonna be an expensive loan.
Well, when you look, the one you mentioned, when you talk about manufactured housing today versus stick-building, if you go into some of the hurricane areas, you'll see where manufactured houses survive where the stick-built don't. And from a banking perspective, even before I retired 10 years ago, we had changed the way we looked at manufactured housing because in a lot of instances, they're better built than a stick-built house. That I don't think is the issue today, like it was.
I don't know, I time at the Red Cross, when there were floods, not only locally, but across the state and you would go to them, some of the worst devastation was manufactured homes.
But you were looking at eastern North Carolina and most of those were older homes, they were not new. They were not new homes. And Shirley's from there, I worked some in one of the floods in eastern North Carolina. I'm familiar with the Rocky Mountain area and all that. But you were dealing there with older mobile homes, not the newer ones. But if you look at a lot of the hurricane areas in Florida, Texas, Gulf region, it's a different ballgame today.
Well, what, do we have clear information about, less so the sort of general lending practices or financing structures around manufactured homes, but more specifically financing and lending that would be available for the types of manufactured homes we're contemplating with these amendments? Cause it's really a subset of the market, as I understand, of the product. So that would be to me, the sort of drill-down question is, are the specific criteria that we're looking at ones that have any association with predatory practices or not? And if we could shine some light on that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, let me speak to that, I'm gonna give you two resources, which you can clear it up if you want, if you wanted to, if you want to check it out. One is, there was a very restrictive federal law passed, Dodd-Frank.
Right.
Y'all remember Dodd-Frank?
Yeah, I forgot.
No commissioner needs to be concerned about predatory lending. Federal government passed Dodd-Frank to deal with that. You cannot have it in the state of North Carolina. It does, you cannot take someone that has more property and give them a loan when they can't pay for it. can't pay for it. You can't make a loan on any product with incredible interest rates, because it is not legal. You cannot do that. So the term predatory was dealt with by Dodd-Frank, with a lot of struggling and concern within, within different, different industries, but it has, it has helped, it's made it very, very complicated, but it has stopped the issues that you're speaking of. Second thing, so that's one resource. The second resource is Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. If you'll go to Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, and you will look at their lending and what they do, they lend very aggressively in the manufactured housing industry, because they recognize that, yes, they have what's called a duty to serve, which means that they cannot make loans just to rich people, they cannot make loans just to middle-income people. They must reach the underserved, either by income, or to Chairman's point, by credit, and they have guidelines that work within the Dodd-Frank to allow those loans to occur. There is actually a product at Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, if you go to their, their website, it's called MH Advantage, and it is a manufactured home, and it's not a modular home, that looks, you cannot tell it from, you could not tell it from a stick build. With the exterior, you know, requirements and some of the things, no, it's not really requirements, it's just that the industry has worked with Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac to provide them a product that allows them to meet their duty to serve. And so what, what we would be doing is actually giving people the opportunity to go and, and get a, a 30-year loan. If the product and the property and the person's ability to pay, all three of those things come together, then that person can get a great product. To Commissioner Edward's point, what typically happens in a manufactured home community would not be much different than an apartment complex. If, if, if a major storm or flood occurs and you have a concentration of homes, then you're gonna have extensive damage, and that's typically what gets promoted and advertised and should, but when those houses are replaced, it must be replaced according to current flood requirements. And if you go back to a lot of these areas, like, you know, Greenville, North Carolina, eastern North Carolina, where a lot of people did mission trips, and went over there, our church went over there and worked, you know, where towns were wiped out, and these were towns of manufactured homes. But the water got up so high that it, it damaged home, and it would have damaged any home, to the point that you had to replace it. If you go back there now, what you will see is that the new, you will not see new stick-built homes there, you will see new manufactured homes- Sure do. -there, because that's all they can afford. But what you will see is you will see them set higher, you will see their, the tie-down requirements of strapping, to Commissioner White's point about, about Florida in 1993, post-Andrew, they went through and made all these changes in how a house must be tied down, and they figured out a way, I don't know how or what they did, but they figured out a way to anchor a two, three, four-piece home, whatever, into the sand, and it, in a 120 mile an hour wind, won't move it. But they figured out how to do that, so that's a few of the things. They're legitimate concerns, but they're old concerns. They're, those ships have sailed a long time ago. People that are afraid of, afraid of allowing someone to have the home of their choice tend to, tend to, to, to have those questions and concerns, and they need to be answered, but they, but they have been. If you'll go to Dodd-Frank, you'll go to, if you'll Google Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac and MH Advantage, you can see that they're very aggressive, and, and most banks are today. If they have the ability to pay, then they're lending, so.
Are the-
Arthur Miller's here as well.
Sorry.
Thank you. So maybe this is Keith, maybe this is David. Are the homes that would be built, would they all be considered real property or personal property?
And that's one of the things that Keith's office studied, so when you, when you do permanently affix them to the foundation with the standards, that's where you're starting to get into becoming a permanent fixture of the property versus something that's just personal property. If you were just to go in, leave the tongue, trail lights, put it on blocks temporarily, that's where it does not become a permanent-
So all of the, everything, is everything that would be allowed under this ordinance would be required, would be required to meet the standards for real property development, not personal property?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And that's where we're gonna have to work additionally with permits to assure that when somebody walks in the door, that they understand upfront, will probably prepare a sheet of information and say, here's the things we're gonna be looking for, to make sure that those standards are addressed.
And again, unless it's going in a community, Chairman, unless it's going in a community where it's leased property, your, if it's going on private property, your lender will, will, will require that. It has to, those things have to be removed, and they will, they, they, it requires it to be real property, and that's where the rate-
Well, that's been my understanding, is that is, that's the kind of definition of it's real property versus personal property, where, which has to do with the foundation and-
And these are, these are-
That are gonna make that, make a big difference.
So that's why the requirement for the foundation, you know, because it's FH, it's Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, you know, any major lender, they're gonna want that anyhow. It takes it from, it takes it from basically a mobile home to a home, once you get to foundation, no difference.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on this for now? All right, thanks, David. Thanks, Keith. All right, there's two other, is any more questions?
Good afternoon.
Hey, good afternoon.
So we have two rezoning applications on the agenda. Zoning public hearing 2019-03, Lee's Creek, and 04, which is Hernandez rezoning. Lee's Creek is 65 and 67 Lee's Creek Road, it's near the intersection of Lee's Creek Road and Irwin Hills, it's through the trees behind the emergency management facility, for reference. Both applications, Hernandez rezoning is, should've been more ready. Hernandez rezoning is 7 and 9 Arbor Street, kind of in the Emma neighborhood. Both rezonings are consistent with the comprehensive plan, both rezonings from more of a community character perspective, appear to be consistent. Both rezonings are recommended for approval by both staff and the planning board.
So can I ask, on the Hernandez rezoning request, do we know what they are, why they're asking for that?
Yes, let me, let me preface that by saying that we can't consider a specific use intent in a rezoning. Having said that, the goal is to install manufactured housing, which is consistent with what's pretty much all around it, with the exception of the southern boundary of the property.
So you know that I knew the answer to that question before I asked it?
I assumed.
So that's why we're looking at what we just finished talking about, because here is a family, Hernandez family, is evidently, and this is the first time I've even looked at this, they're evidently wanting to place a home, and the only thing that can happen is it has to be changed to R3.
Correct, and the Hernandez property is currently is on commercial services, and if you look in your agenda packet at the, at the boundaries of the-
Yeah.
-commercial services district, I would argue that it was a bit of an over-application of commercial service into what is predominantly residential neighborhood.
You know, that, and that's interesting, we was talking about that with Nate, where'd you go? You know, that, you know, the chairman, you know, talking about it being arbitrary, and I know it's not arbitrary, but it's certainly a lot of it doesn't, doesn't make any sense. And a lot of this is, this is, this is gonna be in the, Emma's in the, would have been in the ETJ.
Correct.
Right?
So matching the zoning districts again, is probably what happens.
Correct. It would have been in. Yeah, and so that would have been considered out, you know, years ago, and so there would have been manufactured homes in that, and they're sort of, they're, okay, thank you. What about Lee Creek, next to that?
Lee's Creek is rezoning from R1 to Public Services. Again, if you look at the zoning boundary in that area, what's being requested, I would argue, is a more rational zoning boundary in that particular area. The applicant, their goal was to establish a pre-K program in the existing building. It's not allowable in R1, it would be allowable under Public Services, it has the added benefit of, I think, cleaning up the zoning boundary along that property line. In terms of current uses around the property, everything to the, I believe the south of the existing zoning boundary, which would include the, the property proposed for rezoning, those are schools, other kinds of institutional uses, so in terms of what would be allowed in Public Services, it's very consistent with what's around it on three sides.
Right. Sounds like there's some other questions, thank you. Hey, I do have, I, sorry, I would have to give back, I promise this is my last question. I have one question I want to ask Nate about the last, last order, so the planning board approved the recommended changes on a six to two vote. So I just wanted to ask, could you, could you just kind of summarize, I mean, because it's important issues, I've seen it's important, I've listened to, you know, what our planning board's saying about this, what were the predominant views, the favor and those who voted against it? Could you just kind of summarize, because the planning board spent a fair amount of time on this, right?
Sure.
So kind of summarize what their thoughts were, both the majority view and those who voted against it.
So the two dissenting votes, we'll talk about those first, were concerns with compatibility and character as it related to really the ETJ areas, or limestone, or Beaver Dam, where you already had restrictions in terms of the placement for many years. They just felt like there was some concern about all of a sudden sort of changing that policy, especially in areas where you had established neighborhoods that may not have put forward deed restrictions, because they had the county's underlying zoning as a protection. The votes that were for it looked at it more of an equity issue, affordability option, an option, you know, someone may not be able to afford a modular home, a modular, of course, being built to building code, manufactured home being built to HUD standards, and there's a price gap between the manufactured home and the first entry point of a modular, which is on-frame, there's two forms of modular, on-frame and off-frame, and so it was looking at just allowing another option in a, in a county that's challenged for affordable housing.
What type of public input and comment did you receive?
Well, interestingly enough, for something that is a policy change like this, we, we did not really receive all too much.
How much is all too much? I mean, how many people spoke against it?
At the planning board, yes, we-
One person.
One person?
Very good.
One person spoke against, and five persons spoke in favor.
Okay, that's good information, I had.
All right, thank you.
So continuing through your agenda for tonight, the next item is under Old Business, the East Haven Loan Agreement. There have been no changes since we talked about this together two weeks ago, but a quick recap before you tonight is a recommendation to authorize the county manager to execute the community development loan agreement with mountain housing opportunities, and also enter into the associated promissory note and deed of trust. This is the loan agreement that was approved by the Board of Commissioners at your February 5th meeting. Most of the terms of that loan were part of the approval, including the 0% interest and the 20-year term, as well as some repayment, which are listed in the request for board action cover sheet, as well as in the loan agreement itself. A commitment to extend the period of affordability, and also a commitment to pay property taxes, we talked about this last time. The new pieces, which are coming to the board through the Affordable Housing Committee, is the dispersment schedule, and that's listed on your sheet. It covers fiscal years 20, 21, and 22, so issuing the funds from Buncombe County to mountain housing over that three, three fiscal, fiscal year period, repayment over the 20-year period with a balloon at the end, balloon repayment. Other than that, there's nothing further to cover. Questions?
Can we vote on that again?
I didn't hear you.
Can we vote on this again?
The vote tonight is to authorize the county manager to enter into the loan agreement and the associated promissory note and deed of trust.
Thank you.
The budget action would be incorporated into the FY 20, 21, and 22 budgets.
We spoke a couple of weeks ago about the MSD easement next to Ferry Road, so that easement has been in place, or the sewer lines have been in place, and were there for about 30 years, and for compliance and regulatory reasons, they recently had a as-built survey done, and the road and the easements don't all match, so they just wanted to make sure that the county would offer them the opportunity to make sure that the easement location is the same place as the, the materials are, and then to abandon a small portion of old easement. So we're just helping them with their regulatory compliance or something, we, the county agreed to 30 years ago, so just cleaning that up.
Do, do we know where we're at on the sale? How far along we are on that?
They, the group Carnegie Holdings has been making their $10,000 per month due diligence extension payments, so we're on target for them to have to close on or before June 22nd.
Yeah, that'd be great.
They, they may, I'm just guessing, they may be shopping to approvals, to investors.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, moving right along, I would be, I will be presenting a resolution for you to authorize County to enter into a grant-funded position, a policy, so that we can give benefits to grant-funded employees. We don't really have that in our personnel ordinance, so we're passing this policy that basically will give them healthcare, retirement, 401K, basically all the same benefits of regular county employees.
During the time that they're employed?
Yes, during the time that they are employed, yes. And that also the big difference will be is that they are here for a limited duration, and that basically everything will end once the grant funding ends, unless that position becomes a full-time regular position.
So, so how does that process work? Because, you know, in some cases, without reopening the merits of any particular position, you know, sometimes we get these grants, and those, seems like those positions become permanent, right, or there's sort of this, so how does, how does, in what cases is it sort of assume that a grant-funded position might become permanent versus, you know, once the grants are gone, it's over?
Unfortunately, I think that's a case-by-case basis, but a lot of like law enforcement grants that I've seen over the, over the history, a lot of those positions, you get officers, and then there's the continued need to keep those officers, so that, that would be an example. But in terms of county positions and things like that, we really haven't had that many grant-funded positions in the last five years, so we really don't have a specific policy of that they become full-time positions, but normally they're just required to be, the position's just a grant-funded position, and exists only for the time of the grant.
Commissioner, I'll jump in here a little bit, you would have to approve that position being hired as well, to transfer it from a grant-funded to general fund dollars, so that would be an ask of you to continue, and you can vote out for it now, but it would not be an assumption, or would it be automatic?
Would this new policy apply to current employees who are grant-funded?
Yes, we've made it retroactive to apply to all, all current grant, fully funded, grant-funded employees, we need to make that, but most of them are all fully funded. Thank you.
That is all the items on the agenda. Rachel, your board appointments. Rachel.
Rachel. This is a little bit different this time around, because it's coming from committee.
Typically, staff doesn't introduce, and we can defer to however you want to handle the agenda item this evening. The, there is a set of board appointments that are coming out of committee, so this is for the Early Childhood, Education, and Development Committee. As you remember, the committee was established by resolution of the Board of Commissioners, and the three commissioner members of that committee were appointed in January, Beachrara, Whiteside, and Presley. We have advertised for members of the public to join that committee, received 29 applications for what the committee was initially thinking might be six seats. We had defined a schedule of different representations, which you'll see on your cover sheet, someone representing the business community, someone who's a parent, et cetera. When we received those applications and the commissioner members of that committee reviewed those, explored the idea, since we haven't yet passed bylaws, we have flexibility to expand the size of that committee, and ultimately are recommending an addition of 12 members to the three who are already seated. So it will become a 15-member committee overall, provided that these appointments move through for approval this evening. And we've already gotten in touch with the members, both who are recommended and not recommended, and appreciated the level of community involvement and participation, and are cultivating other ways for those people to participate, even though they don't get selected for the committee.
So I'm sorry, I may not have been listening very well. How did we go from 29, I mean, I'm looking at the list, it looks like we did a list of recommendations. How did we go from 29 to 12?
What was the selection process? We held a committee meeting, so staff compiled information. Part of it was the information that was provided in the application that went through the clerk to the board's office. We also followed up with member, all of the applications, and gathered further information about what their interests, background, attributes that they were bringing. And then the committee members, the three committee members, each went home and worked independently to select their recommended applications, and then we went through sort of a sorting process, which I would ask if anyone else wants to sort of describe or speak to, to give it narrowed down. We did not narrow down to six, and that's why we ended up with 12.
Yeah, some of the, I mean, first of all, just that I think all 29 applications were very strong and compelling. But as, as we went into the discussion, we were looking for representation across the counties, so represent, geographic representation, looking at folks' relevant experience, either in early childhood specifically or a relevant sector, looking at racial and ethnic diversity as one priority area. And, and then we also were attentive to, because this committee will be making recommendations to the full board regarding grant applications, we wanted to be attentive to real or actual perceived conflict of interest, so that was something else we looked at in terms of whether applicants had a direct relationship with entities that would be applying, and, or, and how close that relationship was, and whether that would present conflict. So I think that was sort of the matrix we tried to use. It was a tough set of choices, but this is a really extraordinary group of 12 community members who, I think, together would be quite a team. And, and this is what we heard, sort of starting from the night we voted on the resolution consistently through to sort of a lot of, a lot of encouragement from community members to make sure that community voices are sort of part of this work as it, as it rolls out.
As an aside on that, we do have, let's talk open right now for comments and feedback, and that is coming in to give information, advice, questions to that committee as it considers the investment of the Early Childhood Development Funds. And we have an upcoming public input session, which is scheduled for April 11th.
And so it's 12 citizens plus three commissioners?
Correct.
So 15 total?
But the three commissioners were already selected, so there's only 12 names on your list to take action on tonight.
How do you want, if we run that, do you want Rachel to present, or?
Would you like background and context during that agenda item, or do you want to move through it like regular appointments from the bench?
I'm sorry, was there a question?
Do you want me to come to the podium and present this agenda item this evening? Or do you want to handle it as you typically do your board appointments from the bench?
So I'm gonna make a suggestion, since I wasn't on the committee. I think we, we should, I think we could make the recommendation from the, from the, from the board. We could have the list of, you know, people, and I think people should see the list. It was narrowed down by the, by the committee, and, you know, I think they did a good job, and I don't see why we can't make a motion to point 12, read them off, and, and do that. Instead of going into a long, you know, dissertation on how we got to where we're at, we can just be very, very brief. But I, I think that can come, I think that can come in a motion board.
The description of the process that I shared with you just now is written as part of the agenda packet and is published online along with the names.
So they've got that, so I, I mean, I, I think we could handle this, we would handle any board appointments.
I agree.
It wouldn't be my fault.
Yeah, thank you.
I agree.
If I may, like normal appointments, there is a list of all applicants that I present to you that will be in your package, so you will have the list of all 29 applicants as well.
Great.
Good to go.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thanks.
All right.
So then we're gonna turn it over to staff updates. And we'll start moving on. Moving on, here we are with the audit.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. So I sent you an email Friday, letting you know where we were at with the audit, but I wanted to get up here and formally tell you that we had set the, we had approved the extension, or you had approved the extension, February 5th to March 31st for the audit completion. We had a status update meeting with them on CLA, that is, on the 28th. There was no way we were gonna make the 31st. Come to an agreement that we need to go to February 15, or April 15th. Talked to LGC, Local Government Commission, and made sure that we don't have to do a contract extension or anything along those lines, and we are, as far as that is concerned, happy to answer any questions you have. But just for some background, as far as what the delays reasons are, it's basically the perfect storm. We had first-year auditors, we have a broad investigation, we have very high-risk extensive sampling, we have key turnover positions. It's just been a lot of work.
Yeah.
And through no fault of staff or the auditors, we have all been working extremely hard just to get this thing done, but we're almost at the finish line, so.
Thank you.
I do have a question, though, as far as presentation. I believe, all things, we get this thing done, because if no, no more surprises, and we're done by the 15th, then I would imagine we would be presenting on April 7th to you at the board meeting. Is it the audit committee that wants to present to you, is it?
May so. May so. You mean may so. May so.
I'm gonna say both of you in.
I'm sorry. I am in so many different dates right now, it's not...
That's my birthday, just for the record, guys.
So for your birthday, we'll have the financials presented to you.
I would certainly like to hear from you, potentially additionally, audit committee, but I'd like to hear directly from you and kind of hear your thoughts at that point.
Okay.
And in addition, the auditors would actually be here to present.
Right.
But then must report to you.
Yeah.
So the auditors would have to respond, but we can have an introduction by Dawn, but in North Carolina, it must be presented by the auditors.
I think, you know, I mean, I don't know that we need to ask every member, every member of the audit committee to come. I do think having some, you know, and of course, we've got commissioners on the audit committee too, but it might be nice to have a member or two from the committee. I mean, obviously, just with what the county's been going through, there's, you know, interest in this. I think kind of just taking the time to describe the process, describe the, you know, the citizens who are involved in working with the auditors. And maybe we're taking a little more time than, you know, what would be typical for this kind of government.
We can have the chair to come.
That'd be great.
Yeah. And we have the internal auditors, we got, yeah, two of us, yeah, we got.
And Terry and I will coordinate with the audit committee to make sure we have Larry or somebody there to present.
That'd be great.
And I'll be happy to do an introduction and talk about the process, and then turn it over to the auditors, and they can fill in on everything else.
Just to go back for a sec, so can you walk through again what, what this means with the LGC, and how we need to, how we're communicating with them?
They've already, we've already had the extension, so anytime you have an extension or the original contract, you automatically get a 30-day leeway. So since March 31st was our deadline, we actually have until April 30th to get this thing done, so we don't have to do anything additional.
Okay.
Now, if something else came up that was going to push us beyond that, we would have to come back to you, do a contract amendment, and do an additional extension.
Dawn, do we know yet how this is going to affect, or will it affect our bond rating?
We have talked to the auditors, and we'll get an unmodified, a clean opinion, most likely. I can't state that for fact, but we have talked to them, and there's nothing as of now that would change that. So as long as we're getting a clean opinion, even though we are late, I don't see that impacting our bond ratings at this point. And as long as we are taking corrective action to address whatever findings there may be, we should be okay. No guarantees, but I think we'd be all right. Thank you, Dawn.
Mountain Housing Eagle Market Finance Restructuring, so they're still under TD Bank Construction Loan Funding. There's no real market for that, they don't want to hold it, so they're going to Freddie Mac, through Bellwether. So what they ask is here is just to restructure the loan for the permanent financing with Freddie Mac, and their documents are very risk averse, as I'm sure you all know. So we're, it's not for any new money, it's not changing any position. The only ask they have to do is to make sure that our date is subsequent, due date is subsequent to the Freddie Mac due date, so they're asking for a two-year extension. And that's the purpose of that transaction. That'll come to this board, we're aiming for April 16th, and I'm working with their lawyer, Carolyn Snipes, who's across the street. Any questions? And the next two items mentioned last...
Did you have a question, sir?
I just said that Mountain Housing Doug probably needs to stay in.
Public Service Natural Gas is asking for an easement. It'll be next to the MSD easement that we've talked about. They're going at the same time, they're going underground with some new services. So they're asking for an easement company there, and I think they're offering us $10,000 for the easement, for permanent easement. Duke Energy Progress, the next item, is asking to change their easement. They've had an easement for years to the Brent Bend Creek property, and they're on a project to try to get all of the power in Bend Creek underground, because there's often power outages because of the current conditions. So they're just asking to relocate an easement there so they can go underground, and checking with General Services, they're fine with that, they can still use the same access, and it shouldn't change any use of the park. Any questions?
That'll be in our meeting two weeks from yesterday.
Then I want to turn it over to Jen to talk a little bit about where we are with budget and possible tax impacts.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. With recent conversations surrounding the Mission Property Sale Valuation and Revenue Estimates, and in the context of fiscal year 20 budget planning, we would like to review and highlight our fiscal year 20 preliminary revenue outlook, as well as some details with Keith Miller for the Mission Property Valuation Estimates and Timeline. In your packet, you have five sheets that I will reference as I go through the information related to revenues. Let's see if you still put these all the way. The first handout will read unrestricted revenue growth. It's a two-page handout with some tables. So for March 15th, 2019, staff developed an early revenue projection based on our commitment to Buncombe County and Asheville City Schools to provide them with an unrestricted revenue growth calculation for budget planning purposes. You may remember that Mr. Wood had proposed the use of a calculation as a way to provide a budgetary estimate for planning purposes for both the school and for the county. The projection compares the percent growth from the current year adopted budget to the projected next year's budget, specific for unrestricted revenues. Restricted revenues are removed from the calculation as they are identified for specific purposes. Therefore, the unavailable, so therefore those restricted revenues are unavailable for generalized use or application. In the worksheet provided to you today, the unrestricted revenue percent growth as of March 15th was 4.24%. I don't, I'm not going to go into specific details around this specific calculation, but wanted to provide it to you as we have shared this with the schools in our discussions, preliminary discussions leading up to the budget planning process.
So in other words, a 4.24% would be what we would expect their growth to be on their budget requests.
Any questions about that?
So that, and, and that's a, that's a guideline for them, so that they're not...
It's a, it's a guideline. I think the discussion with, in particular, the Buncombe County School Board and Mr. Wood, was in hopes that, again, for planning purposes, that it would, would give both sides the ability to have an estimate or a target.
I thought that Mr. Wood talked to him, when he talked to him, it was basically counties growth 2.5%, but the schools one, 4%, or how do you, how do you make that number four?
How do you reconcile that? Right, so going back to the fiscal year 18 adopted budget in comparison to fiscal year 19's adopted budget, that estimate was 2.28% for the county. And once you did the Second Amendment to the Funding for Education, that percent growth from 18 to 19 for the schools was 4.3%. So this is our first year in doing this.
As we look at the, excuse me, the revenues here, tracking the funds that have been recovered through the settlement with insurance payment and various legal settlements as a, not recurring revenue, but a one-time revenue source for FY 19?
So currently, because those are one-time revenues, and those are received in the fiscal year 2019, you won't see them depicted here, because what, what's here is your fiscal year 2019 adopted budget, and then fiscal year 2020 requested. So we've received those in the current fiscal year. Where you will see those show up is going to be in the fiscal year 29 projections.
Projections, okay.
And we will, we will revisit projections with you again on May 7th.
Thank you.
So moving on to the third page of your handout, you'll see a side-by-side comparison for fiscal year 29 adopted and fiscal year 2020 as of April 1st. We've conducted a first pass for fiscal year 20 projected revenue as of April 1st, and we've provided you with that side-by-side comparison. The total first pass revenue projection is $317,364,393. You can see that total reflected in the second column on that handout. For comparison purposes, the fiscal year 19 adopted revenue budget without appropriated fund balance is $308,183,037. In comparison now to the first pass for fiscal year 20, we will have, we anticipate and experience a 2.98% growth, so about 9.18 million. Revenue streams are reevaluated as we continue to receive actual revenues in the current fiscal year and conduct... and conduct work on projections. The next review, as I mentioned earlier, is going to be May 7th with this board for fiscal year 2019. I'll highlight some areas in that comparison. As you can see, the general revenues is our largest value of revenues. The total growth for general revenues is 4.3%. Embedded inside of general revenues is our local options sales tax. So, those various articles that are in the general fund, so only the portions that the county maintains is estimated with a growth of 5.67%. So, that's inside the general revenues. Another item that I will-
That's by what, 7?
5.67%. And that'll be the average of the various articles that are inside the general fund. So, that's Article 39, Article, I don't want to mention all the articles, but only the general fund share of it. A couple other items that I will point out in reference to the comparison, you will see parking services revenue of $677,172. That looks like a new revenue. In reality, that's been, it's a change in accounting practice for us. Previously, those would have been netted against each other, the revenues and the expenses. We've now been deliberate in breaking out the expenses and the revenues, and so you'll see both sides of those in the fiscal year 20. Before we move on to fiscal year 20 add valorem revenue projection, are there any other specific questions that I can answer? So, moving on to your handout, which is titled Estimated Add Val Tax Revenue for Year 2020. The tax assessor and the tax collector are an integral part to the development of our add valorem tax revenue projection. The budget calendar outlines two dates in which we review and discuss tax valuations in conjunction with the tax assessor and collector. March 8th was the first scheduled due date with another review to discuss changes scheduled by April 26th. April 26th is also our target date to review for an additional time, all departmental and other general revenues, as an effort for us to plan realistically as possible. So, you'll see notes on these, subject to change. We do continue to reevaluate as those actuals come in. Focusing on the fiscal year 20 column on your handout, the estimated total property valuation amount is $38,861,12,989. The add valorem estimated revenue, taking into account a 99.75% collection rate, totals $205,060,822. Compared to fiscal year 19, this is a growth of 3.98 or rounded to 4%. We've separated out, at the bottom of your handout, you can see the HCA valuation and revenue estimates that are currently projected in the budget plan. This will be, you will want to reference this as I turn it over to Keith Miller, because Keith is going to review details specific to the property valuation and the timeline for Mission Property.
On this sheet here that Jennifer just talked about, was included in our estimates is the 500 million. That's the value that we have in our budget to get it at 4%.
It is.
That's what we are looking for. On this spreadsheet that Jennifer just ran over-
Yeah.
And the real property and the personal property to get to the 38.8 billion, what we included in our numbers is 500 million for Mission.
So, what we assess?
Yes, what we are hoping to get from Mission for this year.
And Keith's going to go over a little bit of the details as to why.
So, about a third of the increase in revenue has come from HCA?
So, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. So, I'm looking at the sheet that's in your book, we'll start at the top. So, to clear up some confusion, March of 2018, that's the first block of information you see there. This is where the confusion started, was a year ago, when the prior county manager and Citizen Times, when this Mission came out and said we're possibly going to sell, asked for a projected value. So, at that time, Mission Health Properties Real Estate was valued at the $940 million. That was what was actually on the assessments on the books. The new Health Tower was an estimate because it was just started construction. Mission Personal Property was clearly just an estimate because we, at that point, didn't really know how much personal property they had. So, the 1.6 million, 1.6 billion value estimate in March of 2018 was truly just a snapshot in our best-case scenario when I was asked, how big do you think this is? At that point, nobody knew, because at that point, nobody knew what the sales price was going to be. I didn't even clearly know what was going to be sold. Nobody had any idea. So, we, at that point, just took a snapshot of everything that we could find that Mission owned and then done the estimates to arrive at the 1.6.
And that's for properties in Buncombe County?
Only Buncombe County. These values I will discuss with you are only Buncombe County.
Okay, great.
So, we move on then to January of 2019. Between March of 2019, some things that we learned, well, the sales price was 1.5 billion. Now, 1.5 billion included all of Buncombe and all the outlined counties' regional hospitals. So, at that point, we knew that we would not have a taxable value of 1.5 billion, because we had to separate out the other values to determine what was in Buncombe, okay? So, January 1 of 2019, which was your fiscal year 20, the values which Jennifer's estimating for you now in your revenues, the Mission Health Properties real estate value only, we are estimating for FY20 at the $417 million, okay? This is made up of approximately 70 different parcels of real estate. So, there's a lot of, a lot of complexity and a lot of different things in this. Mission Health Tower, currently under construction, we have an estimated value for FY20 at $230 million. And that's where the construction was at on January 1, okay? So, that's an estimated percent complete as of January 1. Now, with that there, we had some help from Mission and from HCA to help us determine how much they had spent on the building at that point, okay? Mission Personal Property, Personal Property, you get no value for FY20. I've included the, in the back of this sheet, I've included the statute for you, 105,285. The statute says that exempt property, transferred into a non-exempt entity, real property, will become taxable for that year beginning January 1 in the name of the owner. What the statute does not give you the ability to do is tax the personal property. Gives you the ability to tax the real property, but not the personal property, so you don't get that in FY21.
Next year.
Right. So, total estimated value for FY20 was 3, 3, what is it, 647, 647 million for total FY20, okay? So, does that, okay, go ahead.
Could you just go back and, again, walk us through the variance between the actual assessed value of all Mission Health Properties in March 18 at $940 million versus the estimated assessed value in January 19 at $417 million?
In March of 2018, this $940 million was truly the value that was on all the parcels. Well, we have learnt a lot of things since then, working with Mission and HCA. So, the $940 million does get reduced in value for a few reasons. HCA provided us CAD drawings for the campus here, so we got the correct square footage. Now, you have to imagine that our staff trying to go measure that building was pretty complex. But they provided us with CAD drawings, they provided us with engineer reports on conditions of the buildings, things that needed to be repaired, the condition on Joseph's building, the fact that that building, I think three floors will be vacant soon, as soon as the other hospital opens. So, there was a lot of things they asked us to take into consideration as far as conditions of those buildings that had not been taken into consideration while the property was exempt, okay? So, working through that, we did reduce the value for a lot of those reasons from the $940 to the $417. Does that make sense?
What was the $940 based on?
The $940 was based clearly just on our estimate of what the conditions of the buildings were and what we have in the scheduled values as far as the cost on a dollar per square foot for a hospital and what we consider the quality of that hospital to be. That's what generates that number on the scheduled values. Now, that's the same with any cost approach in appraisal. You start with the number of what it is, and then you start deducting from that any excessive depreciation or anything like that that you find needs to be repaired. You know, there's other things that come into that. But the $940 had not considered that. And one reason they hadn't considered that is that the property had been exempt forever, okay? So, for our staff to spend time on this every year, every reappraisal year, to try and determine what a true value was, it wasn't a tremendous amount of time spent on it, just because it was not a revenue generator ever, until now. Does that make sense? That answer your question, Commissioner?
2.30. I thought that they already, I thought the new building was going to be like 400 and some odd maybe.
The 2.30 is considering that the building was not complete. We can only assess the percent complete. Yeah. So, as we move down now for fiscal year 21, you see we carry down the real estate value. If nothing changes in the real estate, it will remain at the $417. Mission Health Tower, at completion, we estimate at $400 million. And then, again, the personal property at $300 million. Now, let me remind you that I came to you sometime back and we entered a contract with Tax Management Associates to do the audit on their personal property. That's not complete yet, but we do have somewhat of an estimate from them on what that looks like. But it has taken them a tremendous amount of time to work through it. As you can imagine, we received a spreadsheet from Mission with over 100,000 rows in it of personal property. So, it takes a long time to work through that, but we do have some early estimates on what that is from PMA. So, that's where that estimate comes from. So, we're looking at the end of FY21, this is 1.17 billion as being a total taxable value.
Let me ask you a question. Now, what we're saying, did we get an outside firm to do the appraisal of the real property?
No.
Why not?
We got an outside firm to do the appraisal of the personal property.
Why not the real property?
Actually, HCA gave us a copy of their appraisals. HCA had to contract for the third-party appraisal to do the appraisals on all the real estate assets, and they shared those appraisals with us. Now, that is a complex project. You're talking about many buildings, many, much square feet. It would probably cost this county $100, $150,000, just a general estimate, to get appraisals on all that, all those assets. So, we didn't really have an issue with the appraisals of which were submitted to us. HCA submitted them, they're from KPMG, which is a private company that does these kind of appraisals.
They were paid by HCA, right?
They were paid by HCA, but actually, HCA does not even agree with their values, so-
They want them low, I'm sure.
So, they are lobbying their own contractor to, you know, reduce the value on some of them. So, I get what you're saying, though. They did employ them to do the appraisal for them. Now, where we also validate that is some is that we have the deed stamps, so we know what they transferred the each property for. We also know what the other counties got allocated as far as value. So, the 1.5 billion had to make sense. We came back with that and said, okay, if we have 1.1 in Buncombe, then how much do we have in the other counties? And does it all come out to be somewhere near 1.5 billion, as they kind of spread it out amongst everybody?
You have to appeal?
Yes. So, the FY20 value, 647 million, is currently under appeal. We have been meeting with them, they came here and spent the day with us. We're working through those values, but that value is still in question, okay? That's why I tell you it is an estimated value. The 647 is not a final value today as far as in taxable value. That's why you also hear Jennifer using in her estimates the 500 million as being the estimate of taxable. So, that's where we're at in that process. Now, an appeal can take, appeals can take a long time. If they choose to not settle this with us, they will then go to our local board of legalization review. That board will hear the appeal. If they don't agree with that, they can take it to Raleigh, to the Property Tax Commission. There, it could be years. I've had cases sit there for two or three years before they're heard. So, it, this, it could go on if they want to push it, and they could draw this out for some time. They don't even have to accept the value from the PTC. They can then go to appellate court, and the appellate court can hear the case. So, there's many things that can happen from this point forward if we don't come to an agreement with them.
While it's in the appeal process, how much do we get paid?
Well, if the property is under appeal and we bill them, they will have the option to either pay the bill or not pay the bill. If they don't pay the bill, then they will pay on whatever the settlement is plus interest on that tax amount.
But will they pay it that year or when it settles?
They can pay it in that, this year, if they want. Let me back up. 647 million that we currently have it assessed, let's say we generate a tax bill on that for them while it's under appeal, for the 647 million. While it's under appeal, they can choose to pay that or not, okay? If they pay it, and then we resolve the appeal, the appeal amount less, we refund them the money plus interest on the amount we refunded them. If they don't pay it, then they will pay it when we settle it, plus interest on the amount that they did not pay. Does that answer your question?
But if they don't pay it for the year that we're budgeting it for, we're going to have a shortfall, right?
Well, you won't, if they choose not to pay it, you will not have the revenue.
Right.
That is correct.
Now, that's the 3.4 million we're looking at, right?
We didn't take the whole amount into our budget because of the appeal. We did back it off of the 500 million in there and not the whole 600. So, that would be a shortfall of 2.6.
So, you all are projecting 2.6 million will be actually paid?
What many do do, and I don't know that HCA will do it, but many in this situation will pay based on what they think the value is, okay? So, if they think the value is 500 million, they may pay the taxes based on 500 million and leave the rest of it. Okay, so, but I can't say that that's their practice, I do not know.
And can you walk, are we going to be covering this at a future meeting also? I just think there's a lot of community interest, I'm trying to, I don't want to spend too much time. But I get, my question would be, can you walk us through it, either today or at a future conversation, what's involved with that appeal process and how it would compare to the appeal process a local homeowner would go through?
It's the same process.
Just the same process?
Yeah, it's the same process. It's the same process here locally, and it's the same process when they go to Raleigh. They will have to put on their case in the same fashion as I would, or any corporation in the county would have to do.
Is the, so, so this is under appeal right now, is there, is the question about the valuation of the real property, the existing buildings? Is that, is there any room for continued analysis on that from our standpoint, or is that door closed? I mean, I understand it would cost money to do it if we were going to do that, but it's, I mean, it's millions of dollars a year, right? I mean-
Another thing, though, you run the risk of it coming in lower. If you go outside, right?
You, well, sure, I mean, you don't know, once you hire an appraiser to do the appraisal for you, you don't know what that's-
You don't know what you're on.
However, let me say this is that, again, HCA is asking for a lower value than they had on their actual appraisals, so- had on their actual appraisals, so...
I mean, I've worked for businesses that, I mean, you get appraisals done, and you engage intensively with your auditors to make all the justifications you can to get that number where you want it to be.
Sure.
As well you should. You probably don't get everything you ask, but that's the process they've gone through with the people they hired, so...
So, let me, let me say a few things about that, if I may. All the parcels except for the Mission Campus, we did, well, we did the Mission Campus, too. However, but all their warehouses, all their leased space, all their independent medical buildings, any of those properties they have, we went back and valued those just as if an individual investor owned them. Okay? As we would do with anybody. So, you own a medical office building in this town and you lease it, and we put a value on it for you, we consider these buildings to be exactly the same. So, we went through every one of them to make sure they were equally assessed with all the other medical buildings in the county. The hospital comes a little more difficult because you don't have, really, you don't have any comparables, number one. Okay? So, from the hospital standpoint, it's a special use building, so we go to the cost approach, and we look at the cost approach, what it costs, what it would cost to build a building similar to that, and then we start making adjustments to it based upon what we know as far as quality, condition, depreciation, all the things involved in that. Because what we want to do internally here is that we want to substantiate what they have told us. Okay? Just because they tell me it's worth five hundred million doesn't mean that we take a step back and say, okay. At that point, then we go to work, and we say, we got to prove it to ourselves, because that's what we do for the citizens, to make sure that we are doing the right thing. So, we, we are digging into it, and we have looked at other hospitals that have sold. The problem at the hospital selling is that there's almost, there's so much involved, you don't, it's difficult to learn how to adjust value based on financing, and based on corporations, and based on business value. There's, there's just a lot involved in it. But the cost approach is really the only way to do it. And we, we became, we found some comfortability in some numbers with what we did, looking at also their engineer reports and their CAD drawings and the square footage and such as that. So, I think I'm saying that to you, Mr. Chairman, just so you understand this, that we have put work into it, and we try to validate the number the best we can internally of what they're telling us.
And is that, just so we're tracking this closely, so, is, is county staff still in that validation process, or has that been completed?
We completed that process last week and sent them official notification.
So, the six forty-seven million number reflects the data that came in vis-à-vis the appraisal that county staff then validated, and that's the basis of the county's position in the appeal process?
Right. We validated the appraisals, and we actually came in still a little bit higher than the appraisals for different reasons, which we have shared with them. So, it'll be up to them now to come back to us and tell us if they accept that or not. But that goes to show you that their valuations were not flawless. We did find things in them, we did find things in the reports that they gave us that didn't work for us, so we went back to them and put numbers on that and said, here's what we recommend. So, we did give them official notice of that, those numbers, last week. Yep.
So, the two hundred and five million revenue is two point six million for HCA.
Uh, we are working to update our surplus personal property disposition policy. The board adopted it back in November. First step we want to do is just make sure that we do everything the same way every time and properly, and want to bring to the board a list of properties which we'd like the board to declare a surplus and authorize staff to dispose of it. The staff has done this in the past, just haven't done that step, but they have kept very good records of the gov deals process, and just want to formalize that going forward and probably bring it to the board quarterly.
And I've had some requests as far as surplus property, there's several nonprofits that are interested. So, one of the things that you will see us bring forward to you is a process for nonprofits that had an opportunity to access some of the surplus property. So, what we're trying to do is allow, if we consider a private sale, the statute allows us to do a private sale, and our goal would be to allow the nonprofits to take a look at it, give them ten days to review it, pick out what areas they want, and then it will go for public sale at that point. But there will be a fair market value that staff would establish that the nonprofit could pay for that item, and then after it would go on gov deals. So, we do, we do have a nonprofit here that's very interested in some of the properties that we will be putting on the market, so to speak. But once you guys declare surplus, then the nonprofits will have a chance to pretty much go shopping before we put it on the market.
But they're gonna pay the fair market value.
Yes. We would establish that, so one of the things you would give us the ability to do is establish that fair market value.
But they would just have to buy it for that?
Yes.
There's no way to do donated value, like we donated the vehicle to the fire department?
You could do a donated, that's another process. This way, there's so many nonprofits that are coming, we will be picking one or two to pick, to donate it to, so this way we're giving everybody the same playing field.
Right.
But if you did want to donate it, you can bring that to us, not be another resolution that we could do for them to donate.
Once you did the RFP, you would be able to donate. And then it goes on the tax, what's a requirement, the tax rules, right?
Yes.
And this is, what we're talking about is really a different process from donation. This is a process for disposing of personal property valued at less than thirty thousand dollars. So, that's be any one item or a group of items, this would be the policy for disposing of that. And the statute allows the board commissioners or city to establish a procedure to put that in place, and it requires that it be offered at fair market value. And that could be Kelly Blue Book, if it's a vehicle, or just looking around and shopping around and finding comparables for old computer monitors or phones or anything like that.
Okay, but the, the consideration of a policy that would allow the county to donate some of the older vehicles that we're not, we don't need anymore to a nonprofit organization, that's not what's coming up for consideration?
No, not donations. If you, donations is already by statutes. If you wanted to donate something, we would just, the nonprofit, we would name the nonprofit, put a notice in the paper for ten days, and then they will be donated. That's the process already defined by the statute. So, if you wanted to donate it, the nonprofit is named, is advertised, and then the nonprofit gets that specific item.
But if we wanted, if we wanted to consider doing that on any kind of, you know, basis, we would need to adopt our own policy for how we want to do that, right? Or, or because like, you know...
The statute allows you to do that.
That's already covered by statute.
Yeah, but doesn't the county have a current policy that says we won't do that, that we're just gonna sell them all, right? So, we'd have to change our local policy to say, you know, hey, this is something we're actually interested in or open to, let's plan on doing whatever, ten vehicles or five vehicles, or whatever it is, but we would need to create a...
You do have an ordinance now that says you would prefer to sell and recoup funds. So, not in conflict with that policy, with this policy was saying, this is smaller amounts, thirty thousand or so under, that we could sell to the nonprofits first. So, they're not competing with another county across the state, they're just competing locally. So, this policy was branded here locally, and we get to establish that baseline for fair values. It wouldn't be a five thousand dollar car, it would be much smaller than that, because we can set that fair value based on, like you said, Kelly Blue Book, and we will look at the maintenance records or what it's costing us to maintain and set that value. So, it would not be prohibited for a nonprofit to afford it. But you're right, if you wanted to donate that, the statute gives you the ability to donate it. You would just have to do it public here, put it out there in the public, ten days, come back to care about it. If somebody comes and says, well, I want that as well, then you'd be going back and forth between which nonprofit you donated to.
So, so, Chairman, I think because we are not, we are not, our policy does not, that's the word I'm looking for, try to supersede the statute or be, you know, against the statute, we don't have to, we don't have to change anything, because we're not challenging the statute at all with any existing policy. So, if we want to donate whatever, then we have a statute to be able to do that. I think there is a little, what we need to clean up is the differences between the policy, surplus policy within the procurement manual passed last November with another resolution this board passed about three years ago that said, we're not gonna do all these donations, let's try to sell at the fair market value. So, we need to align these. Well, but that, I think that came from, I can, Mr. Fire, I think, I think everybody supported, but we had, we had property that was on the rolls, and we wanted to, you know, look at selling that rock. Not, wasn't against, you know, donating, we just, we had some pretty sizable pieces of property we wanted to sell. I may be wrong.
Well, what, how it stands now, we have an ordinance that says no donations. It must be sold. That's what our policy says now. It was adopted in 2015, and it says no more donations. We want to recoup as much money as we can for the taxpayers, so we would sell everything. But we have several requests for donations, so we're trying to find a way that we're not in conflict, but you can reverse that old policy and says we will donate. You can do that.
You know, one of the concerns I have, we have so many nonprofits here, and once we start donating, everybody's gonna expect it.
So, so let me, can I share a little, a few thoughts on this? I think we, I think, I think Commissioner Belter's right, we, we've had this kind of emphasis on trying to sell some of the surplus real estate that we just, you know, counties just get real estate over time, so we've had this policy of trying to dispose of that. I think it's gone great, we've recouped some money from that. I think, I'm all, I think that's working great. On the, on the surplus vehicles issue, so, I would be interested in revisiting the policy to maybe, maybe modify it somewhat to consider for some of the vehicles that we no longer need, that we're gonna sell, that, that maybe it would, it is worth considering a policy where we would work with, with, to see if they could be better used in the community rather than just monetizing them. So, I'd be interested in putting that on the agenda for discussion, going to Al's question about, you know, there's so many nonprofits, you know?
Right.
So, so the idea that, that kind of came to me was actually not to just kind of maybe open it up to give organizations the vehicles, but to, to partner with working wheels who work to actually get these sur, older vehicles into, to, they basically assist citizens in Bunkham County who need an older vehicle which is affordable to, you know, for their transportation needs. And they have a whole program to do that, and so I would be interested in taking a look at whether that may be something the county would be interested in considering. So, it wouldn't just be kind of like every nonprofit in the world would be, you know, there's a program here to help citizens who need affordable transportation to get it, and is that something that maybe we would do with, you know, certainly not all of our vehicles, but maybe, maybe, maybe do a pilot project to see if that's actually a good way to help people in the community, just like we helped, you know, the, the fire department with that vehicle. That made more sense to use it locally instead of to sell it. So, that's something I'd be interested in the commission taking, taking a look at.
Well, I think a lot of this, and, we have a couple of fire departments that, I've got Broad River in one of my districts, and they've asked for just an old Crown Vic. Well, we had to come up with one of them, but then we have another fire department in Alexander that saw that there was a Ford coming available, and what they've been going to homes, they, they arrived before the ambulance does, but they're having to use the brush truck, so, you know, they asked for a vehicle, and this has been going on with the running. Now, running the third county manager for them. It's, that's one thing that I wanted to see done, is this, this is an old vehicle that's from down at Behan's Place, it's a hundred and some odd thousand miles, I think, but it's a big Ford, and that would be a beneficial deal for them, because, you know, they're in a tough time anyway. And, you know, giving ambulances and stuff like that away, no, that's, that's fifteen thousand dollars. You want to go in the ambulance business by the time you see it, and the deal she's talking in two fifteen has been overridden, because we've given two ambulances, way I know of, since then. Went one to a rescue company, plus one to a ferry, and that's, but these, what they're wanting is just something that they can send their help. Broad River has two full diamond porsches, and they've got twenty-six volunteers. Yeah. And they send these volunteers and this car, this Crown Vic, to classes, and now the one they got is pretty well worn out, and we go a long time, towards two thousand and two, so, if, you know, if we can help somebody like that, that's the way I'm looking at it.
So, why couldn't we change the, just add, personal property is an, is an exception on the other policy? Because the other policy was adopted for real estate, for real property, to sell it, not donate it. I'm thinking of specifically one resolution that governed vehicles and personal property. Personal property. Yes. Right. So, now, I, I, I don't know that, you know, that one, I don't know that one particular, though they may be a great nonprofit, I don't think that one particular, you know, group should have access to or have preference maybe to, to, to the whole fleet, because there's a lot of people in Bunkham County go, hey, I'd like to have that, have that vehicle, but I do not think that it's good for, you know, all these to end up on gov deal, and then they end up down in South Carolina, or Tennessee, or on somebody's car lot, you know, or whatever, because anybody, I mean, they can, if we could use it in Bunkham County, we've already spent the money, taxpayers already pay for it. We can use it in Bunkham County, I mean, it makes sense to me to use it if we, if we can do that, so...
Okay. Well, I, I, you know, I, I just, I don't know, I don't honestly know if there's a lot of interest in the nonprofit community to buy vehicles at market rate. If we're just gonna sell them at market rate, I mean, anybody can go on egov.com and bid on vehicles, right? So, I don't know if we're really, are we really helping anybody by doing that? I, I'm not sure, maybe we are, I'm not, not sort of seeing it right away. I think the question about whether, you do?
I do, and, and because one of the things we can get with, with Ron at before, before this afternoon is to look at what one of those vehicles would cost, and give you an idea what it would sell locally to our nonprofits. So, we'll have that ready for us afternoon.
But if they're selling, if they're, if they're selling for such a low amount, can't nonprofits just go and buy cars at that low amount?
I think online.
Anytime? I mean, what are we, what are we, what's, what's the value add there?
I think the value add is that we get to set that right here. When it goes on gov deals, it is the markup, it is cleanup, and it goes up for a higher price, so the nonprofits would not be paying that price that gov deals in the typical world would pay once it go on gov deals.
So, we could set the price.
We could set the price.
Or not, or nope.
To make it affordable.
The statute does require that you set a fair market value, but we all know that there's a lower end and a higher end of those fair market values.
Correct.
And there wouldn't be any bidding like there is on gov deals.
Okay. I'm, I'm open to looking at it, I'm also open to us looking at the general policy that says we would never do any donations. I'm, I'm open to both of those, but I'm open to, yeah, I'm hearing this out as well. So, why don't we...
One look at it, at special areas that we can donate, that's what I want.
Yeah, we should.
I don't think every nonprofit, you know, and as Jeff said, these are Bunkham County nonpro, they are nonprofits, and, you know, if they need an, an older vehicle to subsidize them for a while, these fire departments, we got one fire department, they don't even have, well, these fire departments, I've got Tyler, we got one, he just drives his own truck, and he works by himself, and he's got two part-time employees.
So, this will come forward on the sixteenth, and we would have an option to donate as well as sell, so we would bring that forward. We got eight on the sixteenth.
I wanted to, I wanted to put this on there.
Okay. Moving forward, because we do have a few minutes now to talk about solid waste that you will see on the sixteenth as well.
Okay. Everybody's favorite topic.
Hey, favorite it.
Mr. Chairman?
Chairman's Board? Thank you for opportunity to come and talk to you and give an update today about the franchise contract, Solid Waste Collections franchise contract here in Bunkham County. We're to go back briefly and talk about where we're at and where we've come from. The current contract is set to expire this year, December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, and our contractor, our franchise holder is Waste Pro. And understanding that with this contract date coming down the pipe, we wanted to get ahead and, and start conversations with other local governments and capitalize... and capitalize on the opportunity to benchmark and talk to folks about what's working in their communities, what's not, and establish them, or get a better understanding of best management practices within the collections industries. So, and the, this contract that we're speaking of, to clarify, is the Waste Trash and Recycle Collections in Unincorporated Buckham County. So as we, we spoke with the board in January about our findings and the research that we've done in constructing the RFP, and we were given permission by the board to go out, middle of January, took the, the RFP on the block. And we set a deadline for March first of this year for companies to submit proposals. And we, we did receive two responses and ultimately we found that Waste Pro was the only responsive bidder to the RFP process. We, we did formalize an evaluation committee, but there are several committee members in the room today. We appreciate their, their times and efforts in looking through the proposal. And, you know, it's, that was our goal with establishing the evaluation committee was to provide different perspectives in the room. And, and we certainly were able to do that with public rep, you know, citizen representation as well as county department representation. Another important aspect we have included in your packet, and I hope it's included in your packet, is we launched a Let's Talk Trash survey. And this was in efforts to really reach out to the community and let, you know, one, let them know that this contract is, is coming. We're evaluating this and also get a better understanding of what's important to the citizens, what areas should we be focusing on improving on. And just, just trying to establish all around feedback. And this was through efforts through staff, PR team and IT really helped in establishing the survey. Our target was two thousand responses and we were happy to get over four thousand responses to the survey. We've, we've provided this information to the evaluation committee because we wanted to incorporate that as we talked about the, the key topics in the content, the new contract. Some of the key takeaways that we, that we gathered from the survey results were sixty-one percent of the respondents lived in the unincorporated area that we're specifically talking about today. Fifty-three percent rated their satisfaction with the level of service. Currently being as seven or above and ten being on the, as outstanding. Forty-eight percent expressed that missed trash collection is the biggest complaint as related to service issues. Seventy-seven percent expressed interest in contract provided waste and recycling bins if this were viable. So that's the contractor actually providing a ninety-six gallon container. People seem to look upon that favorably if that was provided to them. We also received feedback that we're not doing enough on the public education side for recycling. We, we saw that people in general sometimes had confusion on what can be recycled, proper methods of recycling. So we see opportunity to improve there and we're certainly going to focus on doing that. Eighty-seven percent responses, we want to see recycling collections continued. That's important to them. And eighty-one percent responded to be interested in recycling bins as opposed to the blue bag system that we're currently operating. So the, the evaluation committee members, Jess, Jess Foster, City of Asheville Solid Waste Director, Eric Carty, Performance Management Director, Rashida McDaniels with Community Development Specialist, Tim Love, Economic Development, myself as Solid Waste Director, and Mr. Yip as a Buckham County resident who has a lot of experience in the solid waste sector. So obviously the evaluation committee was tasked with objectively evaluating the proposal based on the RFP that we, that we sent in and also the feedback that we received from public. Not only did we, prior to the committee in establishing the RFP criteria, we talked to haulers also. We met with haulers. We met with, you know, other, other counties and, you know, trying to get the broad paintbrush of, you know, ways that we can improve the contract parameters and, and better serve our citizens. The, and, and we've talked about it all along, price is not, and, and was not going to be the deciding factor on who was awarded this contract. But obviously it's certainly an important criteria. And you can see in the packet, it's page two of the summary, evaluation committee summary, shows the seventeen criteria that we established, that we would score on and the weight applied to each of those criteria. And several of those include the qualifications of the vendors, the ability to ensure high quality services, obviously proposed monthly fees. And we also looked at automation. We, we certainly, we as an industry view as favorable. We, there's changes happening with safety of workers. That's, that's a huge issue in our industry and are y'all able to find the, I'm sorry. Page two of the evaluation committee report. So the other factors like appropriate supervisor to driver ratio, ensuring, ensuring that things are done in the field appropriately. And also alternative fuel proposed usage. That's what we feel like that's a, that's a critical part of us being able to evaluate the proposal offering on the, on the type of vehicles that they're going to use. So based on the average scoring of the committee, we scored individually, committee members, and then consolidated, took a weighted average and that score was seventy-six point eight for Waste Pro based on their proposal. And as you move to the forward page, page three of the summary document, you, this is a table that consolidates the pricing proposed by Waste Pro and also Centec, which was ultimately their proposal was deemed to be non-responsive, but it shows some comparison data. I, I will, or please note that at the end of this current contract with Waste Pro, the monthly rate for subscribers will be sixteen oh eight. So, you know, it's, it's an important note when you're comparing and looking at these numbers. We had proposers look at and, or price for us and propose different options under different models. The two models being subscriber based, where citizens have the option to subscribe to the franchise collector services or they can self haul their waste recycling to one of our convenience sites. And the comprehensive unincorporated household model being that, that was going to be assessed to everyone across the board in, in unincorporated Buckham County. So that, that was how our hopes were to show cost comparisons and if we were able to gain unit cost pricing, you know, a better situation there by increasing the number of houses serviced. So, so moving on to some of the proposal highlights that we as a committee have identified. Overall, we, we feel like Waste Pro provided thorough knowledge of information and as far as how the RFP was structured and they did so in an organized fashion. Their knowledge of the community is apparent. They, they, they do know the area, they know the challenges. They know some of the areas where they have had failures and I felt like have worked to propose areas to, to get better there. And several, several more highlights out of the, the proposal include strong commitment to implementing alternative fuel vehicles, awareness of the area and terrain. This is, this is a very difficult job. It, it is, there's a lot of things that work against collections every single day. There's, there's weather, there's animals. We got a lot of feedback on the survey. And that's something else we'll provide is the comments in the survey section that people were able to pull out and just type in comments. This is what we're seeing, these are the issues. We want you to have all that, we just didn't want to print all those out as the solid waste department. We'll be, we'll provide that information to you. So a, again, this is a very, it's a very difficult contract. I, I'm thankful that we have, we still have interest and companies can provide any services. Because when you look across the board, in general, margins are thin with residential collections compared to commercial roll-off and commercial front-end market. And we're seeing big haulers pulling back from the table and not wanting to participate in residential collections. So that was a real concern regardless on the front end. And we're, we're seeing that nationwide with the recycling issues as well. The, the benefits were impressive. You know, Waste Pro employees, ultimately they're our brothers and sisters and family that are our Buckham County citizens out there working. We want to see them protect them as much as possible. And to me, Waste Pro's proposal shows really good incentives for safety and incentivizing those safety components. Their supervisor to driver ratio is, is, is good based on industry standards, nine to one. They, they were, Waste Pro's open by examples of technology that would be used. And that's something that we, we knew we had to see improved is visibility in the field as services are being performed.
So what, what about, speaking of that, what about the number of workers that they have that are actually picking the trash? Because when I see them, every time I see them, they are wide open.
Yes, sir.
I mean, they, it's, it's like they're not doing a job or they're in a race. And I mean, they're, when they pull off of the main road and they start going at it, or even when they're on the main road, it doesn't ma, it doesn't matter. They are wide open.
Sure.
And so, you know, one of the questions I've always had is do they have, you know, do they have enough people to deal with, you know, to perform and deal with the amount of, you know, the difficulties of trash pickup? Are they running too lean a crew? I don't know.
Yeah, and, and it's a good question. I felt like Waste Pro acknowledged that they were too lean for, for a long time. You know, there are obvious dips in their service levels, we're all familiar with that. And they have allocated resources, they've put more resources on the job. Now with that said, by nature, and we talked about the difficulties of the contract, we're spread out. There's, and, and Mr. Yip did some research on square mileage compared to how many customers within, you know, that square mileage footprint. And it's a lot of stops, but it's very spread out. So that's, that's something that Waste Pro, as we move forward, needs to clarify. Are you proposing enough resources to, on a continuous basis, provide service levels where they need to be? And we have, we have seen a, on our end, Buckham County Solid Waste, a substantial increase as far as service quality, I would say. And an example of that in, in this year, just looking at two thousand nineteen, with thirty-one thousand four hundred and twelve subscribers, you know, that's, that's in the range over the three months, January to March. That's, that's around six hundred and fifty thousand serviced events. We've had thirteen complaints on the books. So that, that gives a, a broad picture of how Waste Pro has invested in, in getting better. And I feel like they have continued that through this proposal. It's, it's diff, it's, it's not set up the way that it is now. We're looking at automated, which, you know, we have to have that in containers. We're looking at, you know, incorporating different things that ultimately we feel like gets us in a better position to serve citizens on a continuous basis. So that's, that's a good question. And I, I do feel like that with the proposal, it, it seems there, they will have adequate staff to accommodate it. But we're, we're, we're going to make sure of that.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, I think that's important. You know, you look at the, I mean, you look at the unincorporated areas and the unincorporated areas is where they're, you look at the one. If you get a one, you would take somebody off. And so it's twice in the unincorporated areas, well, not twice, it's about forty percent more in the unincorporated areas than in the, in the areas. But, you know, I just, I mean, I want to say every time I've seen them working, they're just wide open and rough. As far as I'm concerned, you know, doing a good job, you know. And you got, but there, there are some things in there they're asking for. Y'all want to make recommendations like, like trash bins, you know, you know? They're saying they'd like to have a trash bin. Are we recommending that they get a trash bin? You know, will that clean up some of the unincorporated, you know, spots that you know, the road and not have animals getting in them? I don't know. I mean, are y'all, will y'all be making those recommendations?
Absolutely. And, and those are things that we've incorporated in the, the different models is contractor provided carts. And when you see the price break down, that, that is, that capital investment at fifty dollars a cart, thirty-one thousand folks, trash in a recycle, that's a big investment. So, but, but with, again, we feel like moving forward, that's going to be the best way. When you look at a, a stack of trash piled up from here over to the table and six foot high.
And the other thing too is if you have a, if you have a trash bin, then because they are wide open, they're not, they're not sitting that down and putting your lid on it.
Right.
It's unrealistic to expect them to do that. They are throwing it on there and chunking that thing and moving. I mean, and so when you, when you get there, I mean, your lid may be, it's a windy day, you got to hunt your lid, you know? So that's from personal experience.
Absolutely.
Being in an unincorporated area, so when I hear the, you know, having those trash bins, that's not, that's, that's not a negative thing to me.
It is a communication thing because transition plan, Waste Pro on their proposal did a good job saying, okay, just because it's the same haulers we have now, it will be a substantial transition. Because when you go from folks being used to ten years of just bringing their bag down to the end of the street and dropping it off with a blue bag, now you've got the cart. Some folks will like that, some folks will have to educate and help understand, you know, why, why we want to do that.
I mean, when I read it, I li, I liked the idea of having the, the trash receptacle. But then when I read it, I'm like, well, I don't want that big old blue thing. I could bring a, you know, a blue bag because you may only have one blue bag, so.
That's true.
It's, it's a, that's a, that's a challenge.
So what is, what is this going to be the agenda?
So next steps, we're, we're wanting, wanting to move forward and to negotiations with Waste Pro. That, that would be our next step. And we have targeted May seventh and May twenty-first to be on, to be on your agenda for this. Per our ordinance, it has to be heard and approved in two consecutive meetings. So that would, that's our timeframe now. And after this briefing update, we're going to get to work and bring Waste Pro in and communicate with them.
So why didn't anyone else apply?
I thought a lot about that. And I really can't say exactly. I'm sure there were a lot of factors. Some of the feedback I've got from haulers is, even the big folks, that they felt they were, they didn't feel comfortable submitting a number as high as they felt like it was going to be to make the capital investment to get here. It's not just the trucks, it's not just the containers, it's the fact of, we would want to see trucks housed in a, in a facility that's indoors, a maintenance facility that they can continue to upkeep these vehicles. So it's, it's a lot more than just saying provide the trucks, which is a huge investment itself. So to me, that was a key piece was, you know, being able to get here and implement a plan to be set up to, to collect this. And also, again, margins are, are thin.
Aren't there a lot of companies that this is their, is what they do?
Several, one comes to mind is Waste Connections. They're, you know, they, they have thrived, a lot of their revenue comes from, you know, out, far out residential collections. And we've reached out to a lot of different companies and some of those just said, we, we have no interest in, in coming to the area right now.
So see, you know, just put a name out, CWS.
Yes, sir.
You know, of course, a lot of board members know, but you know, we're building church and they, they do the, that's who, someone at the church contracted with or had to come to do the commercial. And so did they do residentially or?
Roll-offs, I think.
They just do roll-offs?
Yeah, could badly commercial roll-off, yes, sir. Or a permanent situation like a church would be like an eight yard front-end route.
Okay, so they're, they're doing the larger bins.
Exactly, yes, sir.
So that's the in-center doll commercial.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know if Dane mentioned it, but I think you said there were seven at the mandatory pre-bid conference? That's correct, seven?
Yeah.
Oh, there were?
There was, yes, sir. We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting just to, just to make sure everybody had a good understanding of the scope of work, what we were looking at. And then to consolidate our messaging and information out to those folks that were there. So we, we did have, you know, interest initially. Some, some of the folks, I, I feel like were there to get an understanding of who's, who's going to be involved in the residential collection because that.
I'm trying to make you stop.
Dane, you mentioned that they did address that there were some deficiencies and they may be looking to do some things differently. Will that be broken out for us moving forward so that we can see that comparison?
I, I, I think so. And I think that's something that with permission from the board, county manager, I'd, I'd like for Waste Pro to come in and, and talk about that. Talk about some of the issues that they have seen and some of the just, the call centers that they incorporated late. incorporated late last year has, has made a huge impact. Used, used to, we were getting calls saying, we cannot get ahold of anybody. I've not had that, I've not had that call in several months, I hope you have not either.
Are we gonna have penalties built into the contract?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and that's something, that's something important is, and thank you for that, there will, there will be a penalty schedule involved in that. And that all ties into technology, service verification, and making sure that we hold the contractor accountable. On the other end of that, we don't wanna say, okay, here's a contract, you're over here, go do it. We, we wanna be involved and we wanna help educate the public, uh, and we wanna understand what the issues are, the challenges are, and, and how we can help get the job done appropriately. And also a performance bond will be incorporated throughout the duration of the contract. So that, ultimately, that's our recommendation.
So, so I got just one. And, uh, if you look at their one through ten, did y'all do that survey, the one through ten, or did they do that survey of satisfaction?
So that was the citizens that, that, that took the survey, they did that.
How many, how big was the sampling?
So, for, total was four thousand one hundred and fifteen and sixty-one percent were from the unincorporated area.
Four thousand answered?
Uh, correct.
Wow, that's not bad.
Yeah, we, we were very encouraged by the numbers.
Hey, so, the only thing I was looking at, and this just comes from a previous, uh, company I was with, where we thought, you know, we were really doing a good job on service and so on, but, you didn't have, uh, you, you could do the numbers and say a certain percentage of them would recommend or if there was a certain percentage of us above. You know, seven and eight, almost seven and eight is good. And so there's a, anyhow, I'm gonna just say this real quick, there, there's a, there's a better way of doing it, you know, for Waste Pro, if they can do it, you know, there's a, um, what's called a net promoter score, where you basically try to find out who's actually promoting or senior to do the job. And so, and you throw out middle scores and you subtract the detractors. The thing about those ones, the ones will do the emails. Nine of ten won't do an email.
That's true.
They're not gonna do an email. They're not gonna talk about trash. They're not, they're not even gonna talk about.
They're putting it out, it's on, it's out of my.
Little one, they're gonna email commissioners, they're gonna call the paper and so on and so forth. And so they just need to look at, how are they gonna deal with, those are called detractors. How are they gonna deal with those that are actually causing the damage in the community and could be, you know, affecting our, our decisions in a, in a big way? They need, you know, how they gonna deal with that?
So we're about, uh, about fifteen minutes past time we were gonna adjourn. Um, so, let's look, it's not your fault. We were at time when we turned over. So this is an important topic. So I guess, uh, it sounds like staff are asking, uh, if it's appropriate to just move forward with the negotiation process.
Yes.
So, um, not make any decision on this, but just, you know, what the process is going forward here. So do any commissioners, uh, have any questions or concerns about that recommendation? Um, you know, I mean, I'll say, I'm, of course, I mean, I was hoping we were gonna get a bunch of offers and, you know, be able to really look at the pros and cons of these. So it's, it's disappointing that we only have the one. You know, there's been just a lot of problems with this. And, um, but we have to make a decision, um, and I think we have gone through a process, we invited the world to come in and talk about doing this. So, um, so on one, on one hand, I'm not comfortable that we only have the one offer, but it is, it is where we're at. So do any other commissioners have any feedback at this time just on the process, next steps?
I think the reason you feel the way you feel is the same way that I, I would feel and Mr. Fry would feel, because we were here when it kinda went boom, you know, and we got all those.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was not a good year. But I think during that process.
I think they did a lot, a lot to fix it.
Well, during that process, honestly, we get all this, we, as a board at that time, pressured a big time, told them, you got thirty days to fix it, we're gonna do something different, because we had to. And then I think they understand that, and we need it now to where, the way I look at it is, if they, they come into the contract now and there's certain times that they can't do stuff, then we gotta break, make some of these small services that we have here in the county, utilize them in certain areas if we have to, so we don't get in this position again.
Okay.
Or that position again, we're not in it now.
Yep. Anybody else, any thoughts? So, I'm not hearing anybody saying stop, you know, stop talking. But I, but I, I guess I would just say, you know, I, I really, I, um, I'm open to negotiating, but I'm open to that negotiation. I mean, it needs to be a good contractor, we shouldn't do it. And we, I guess we could always just extend out a little bit longer, so if we can get it to a good place, okay. But if we can't get it to a good place, we can't force it.
Right.
So.
I think it's May seventh, when we come back, we'll, we'll have that detailed discussion on where we're at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Real quick before we break, I do want to introduce Mike Mace. Just that Mike, Mike is our new General Services Director, started last week, and, um, you'll be the one that will be taking care of our facilities.
Welcome.
Welcome, Mike. Great to have you on the team. All right. Thank you, everyone. We'll re adjourn it.